... your lights and any nonessential electric items between 8:00 PM and 9:00 PM on Earth Day, April 22nd, 2008. And this information was actually passed along to me by a friend of mine who is a science teacher at Scranton High School. And I certainly do think this is a worthy endeavor. And I hope, even though it's Election Day, you'll all remember to try to turn down the electricity between 8:00 and 9:00 next Tuesday. Also, please remember in your prayers this week, Mr. John Kennedy Senior and Mr. Nick Ross, two hardworking, compassionate, and honorable gentlemen who recently passed away, and their families and friends who will dearly miss them, and all of those who have died in our city in the last week.
Anyone else? We had a signing sheet.
Tax Day. Thank you.
My name is Mike Osborne, city resident and also a member of the Cable Advisory Panel. In fact, council's appointee to that panel. Wanted to address a couple of issues concerning Channels 61 and 62. The first one was a couple weeks ago, Lee Morgan asked a question about how someone would go about requesting one of the channels that the city is eligible for under the current franchise agreement. Mr. McGough answered or provided an answer, but I don't think it really answered his question. He pretty much provided, which is really technically true, of what the current situation is, which is there are two pegged channels. By letter of agreement, I believe, Channel 61 is controlled or managed by Scranton Today. Channel 62 was the University and Marywood, but their program is supplemented, I think, originally by request of Adelphia because they weren't providing enough programming. So Scranton Today were kind enough to supplement that program so that they would meet the minimum requirements. And I think that's what Mr. McGough answered to is they're probably currently, especially now considering the state of the contract or agreements about who's going to run the stations, there wouldn't currently be enough programming to go to additional channels, even though the city is eligible for more channels under the current agreement. But I think Mr. Morgan wanted to know how he would go about maybe applying for one of those channels. And the answer to that question is there is no procedure in place for that. No one ever looked at it. There's nothing covered under federal regulations. There's nothing in the franchise agreement that addresses that. Which leads me to my second point, or my second topic is, and I've emailed council about this in the past, there really should be a procedure in place, not only for that, but the entire management of the station. Other cities that have peg stations have done that. They've created ordinance, an ordinance that dictates how the stations are managed, how the management is chosen. Equipment ownership, studios, I mean, you can pretty much put into it anything you want, but I think that's the route we need to go. Because right now, I mean, what's happened in the last several months has been, you know, very haphazard. And really, you can see on the programming on Channel 61, Scranton Today has been put in a very sad position, that they don't know what their future is other than ECTV has been chosen, but there's really no details in place. No one knows when there's going to be an agreement or when it goes into effect, when the funding is going to be there, how the funding's going to be accomplished. I mean, they've asked for a pretty significant amount of funding, which the city has never done in the past. I mean, I think the first nine years, the city gave Scranton Today nothing. And over the last 12 months, there's been two separate grants of 11,000 or 13,000, and then 20,000 you voted on last week. But they're looking for a commitment of up to 313,000 for the first year to get underway. And there's really no, there's, I'm not sure how that's going to happen. I mean, there's nothing in the budget to cover that. I mean, I don't see how that's going to happen before the next budget year. But I think the programming's suffering. We really need a process in place. I think now's the time to do it. There's been enough experience over the last 10 years to kind of have a good grasp of what things are. And in Mr. Morgan's case, I mean, if someone, and not just Mr. Morgan, but if anyone, and who's to say what idea someone would come up with? Someone can come up with something completely original. And if they had an idea that would fulfill eight hours of programming a day, there should certainly be a means to approach the city, present their ideas, and get an answer on whether they can go to Comcast and request the additional channel. But again, I think the only way to do that is to create an ordinance that addresses those issues. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Osborne.
Good evening, Mr. President. City council members, Bill Jackowitz, South Scranton resident, member of the Taxpayers Association. Rules of council, I have asked this question before. Do the rules of council apply to council members or just speakers? I hope to get an answer tonight so I can obey the rules during motions, please. When I speak at council, I provide as much information for council to read so that they have a better understanding of what I am saying. I try not to say anything that I cannot back up. Tonight, I provided council with copies of my retirement orders plus my DD Form 214, which by the way clearly states that I retired under honorable conditions. In the past, I have criticized and complimented city council members, Councilman Pulches, McKeeranen, DeBilio, Courtwright, and McGough, also Attorney Menora. Councilwoman Guttelli, Evans, and Finucci also recommended a raise for Kay Garvey, which she did receive. Good for you, Kay. I try not to show any favors. If I agree with you, I say so. If I disagree with you, I also say so. After thinking about it, I now agree with President McGough. We all have the right to react to statements that are made by speakers and also by council members. The only difference that I see is when the speakers try, they are ruled out of order, while council members can go on and on without any interruptions from the chair, unless you happen to be Councilwoman Evans, which was proven on 8 April 2008. Council members are allowed to interrupt speakers or to make up what-if stories about the speakers. Again, no interruptions from the chair. Two weeks ago, 1 April 2008 is a perfect example. Councilwoman Finucci addressed me after I had finished speaking. She stated, "Mr. Jackowitz claims to be this wonderful Army graduate," or whatever he claims to be, "what if I said to him, 'I think he was discharged from the Army dishonorably.' I think there is a problem here. This is not accurate." My five-minute time limit had expired, so I had to stand there without having any chance to rebut what she was saying. So I will tonight. Councilwoman Finucci, you are partially correct. I do have awards and letters from the Army, which I can prove. I have never been in the Army, only the Air Force, for 20 years of active military service. I have provided proof of that tonight. If any council member still has doubt, I have many more documents in my vehicle. I totally support Councilwoman Finucci's right to free speech. What I do not support is the fact that she used my military career as a stepping stone to discredit certain speakers who speak at city council. She had no problem addressing me, so why not address the speakers that she has a problem with? She went on during her speech to say that I am always respectful and she has no problems with me. But as far as I am concerned, the damage was already done when she mentioned my name along with a dishonorable discharge. Council president allowed this to go on. Furthermore, I also agree with Councilwoman Guttelli that her family or anybody's family should not be talked about. When I say that you were not elected to get family members and friends jobs, I mean that. Too many elected officials, family members, and friends have jobs now with the local government. This is a fact. I also agree with the statements that not everything speakers say are accurate. I may add that not everything council members say are accurate either, such as I will never vote for any more borrowing, no vacant storefronts in downtown Scranton, parks bring new business to a city, I have no political aspirations, and so on. So as you can see, it goes both ways. Nobody is perfect, but I guess I am wonderful. When I say that Scranton Wilkes-Barre unemployment rate is at 5.7%, and we are ranked third from the bottom in the state, that is a fact. When I say that 93% of the firefighters voted and 91% voted no confidence in the chief, that is a fact. When I say the city has been distressed for 16 years, that is a fact. When I say that there are more than 50 empty storefronts in downtown Scranton, that is a fact. When I say that kids should swim free in city-owned pools, I believe that. When I say that council members vote on issues not knowing what they're voting on, that has been proven. When I say it is the economy's stupid, look around. Remember a guy named Ross Perot? He was correct. The Clintons and Bushes were wrong. President McGough has stated that council members can either react verbally or physically at comments made by speakers about them. I disagree. Maybe I am wrong, but I hold elected officials to higher standards. Going back into the time, the late 60s, early 70s, during the Vietnam demonstrations and race riots, I stood on many of the riot control lines, being spit on, called a baby killer, and millions of im-ifs. I did not like it, but I took it. Why? Because I swore an oath of enlistment, just like elected officials swear an oath of office. I have never asked anyone to vote for me, nor have I accepted money to be voted into an office to work for the people. These are my opinions and facts, not what-ifs. Clear up the official city council record tonight. And when you speak about a person's career, either past or present, at least choose your words correctly. You want respect, then earn that respect. Speak to whom you are speaking about.
Thank you, Mr. Jackowitz. Gary DeBilio.
Good evening, city council. How are you tonight? As an interested observer of meetings of late, I just wanted to come tonight and make a couple observations about a couple of topics. And I think it'll be a real shame if the programming and the operations of Channel 61 are taken away from Scranton today. I think they've done an excellent job over the last 10 years for virtually no cost to the taxpayers at really educating the electorate and providing public access TV. Now, as you know, cable money has to be put, is put into the budget, and it's used for paying the bills, the light bill. The cable company has to provide a public access channel. Now, I just don't understand how you or Mr. Doherty could justify spending $1 million of taxpayer money at giving it to a new TV company. Their proposal calls for taking $300,000 out of the budget and giving it to this company to build a TV studio, which doesn't exist right now. And then over the next four years, giving them $200,000 per year. So over the course of the next five years, that's $1 million of taxpayer money. It's really not about education. It's about public access. And for anybody that has cable TV, there are 100 channels, in some cases maybe 200 channels, of entertainment programming. So I don't think the public access TV station needs to be about entertainment. So you were elected to protect the taxpayers. And I think it's your job to make sure that taxpayer money isn't taken out of the budget to give to a company to build a TV studio. So I ask you if you would do the right thing, and if someone tonight possibly could make a motion to let Mr. Doherty know that you don't approve of spending $1 million on taxpayer money to set up a new TV station? Scranton Today is just a fabulous company run by fabulous people, and they can do it virtually for a fraction of the cost. Now, I don't know for sure, but I would say that since they've received so little money over the years, that 10% of what this new company is supposed to get might be enough for Channels, for Scranton Today, to continue to operate. So no panel that's appointed by Mr. Doherty should be able to spend taxpayer money. I think that's your responsibility, and I wish that you would look at that closely and consider making a motion and protecting, protecting the taxpayers. Another thing is I'm very happy to see that the medical school is progressing very well. I think that's going to be a great thing for our community, thanks to Senator Mello and Governor Rendell. And I wish you would keep it going as best you can, but let's make sure that nobody gets hurt in the process. And the thing is, I would hope that some alternative low-income housing can be provided and recreational facilities can be provided for anyone who's going to be affected by the medical school. But of course, we need the medical school, and I can't wait for it to come. Lastly, Election Day is just one week away, and I would hope that everyone exercises their right to vote for next Tuesday. I encourage that. And on a local level, it seems that in talking to some people, that some voters seem to be discouraged, that they say that, for example, politicians say one thing yet do another. They say that it seems that politics is for the wealthy and not the average person. And they even say that seems like FBI raids on public facilities, public offices are becoming commonplace in our area these days. So they, they wonder if it's worth voting. So I would just encourage that everyone vote. The only way to affect change in this town and in this country is to vote, keep on voting, and vote in even greater numbers. And I thank you and have a good evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Ferguson. I am a Scranton taxpayer and resident. Our city has seen college students come and go. Most students from University of Scranton, Marywood University, go on to out-of-area or out-of-state employment or further their education. As semesters from both universities wind down, we can expect yet another population decline. It seems that our city is surviving off of our students' population. Where would Scranton be without our universities and nightclubs? Scranton has six well-respected nightclubs in our downtown. And now Scranton leaders voted to establish a smoking ban. Why enjoy something just to destroy it? What part of illegal do council members not understand? Haven't you learned your lesson the first time around? According to Myspace.com, Pennsylvania residents have signed a petition to stop the ban. As of April 9th, 2008, 472,000 people, including residents from Ohio, has signed the petition. I find it laughable that the same high school students that claim they brought the idea to city council first are the same ones that have the highest percentage of smokers. Smoking can't be that bad, can it, Mr. Miller? Our city needs to pay attention to those who matter the most, our men and women of the Scranton Fire Department. For far, for far too long, our council has played to the tune of Mr. Doherty's trumpet. Council members must put their political lives on the line and press Mr. Doherty to sit down with unions and agree to a new contract. How hard is it to sit down and listen and talk? I must applaud Mr. Doherty, however, for putting $10 million into our zoo. Our zoo was once on the worst zoos in the nation list. It is time to bring it back from the dead. Our downtown roads are far worse than roads in most cities like Allentown, which was rated as the most deplorable roads in the state. I hope this sends a message to the mayor, DPW, and especially city council. Finally, let's take care of the establishments we do have, particularly our nightclubs. Remember what I said before, we couldn't be electric without our spark. Nightlife brings business. Business brings tourism. Catching on yet? We need to rebuild our nightlife with or without a smoking ban. Our downtown is changing, which is good, but our nightlife is dying. If we don't save our nightlife, we could safely say the $200 to $300 million Mr. Doherty pumped in, pumped into Scranton was for nothing. As 2009 nears, I can envision a new mayor, three new council members, and a new tax collector. Right, Mr. Courtwright?
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
Good evening, council members and junior council members. I am Reverend Catherine Simmons of Florence Midtown Crime Watch, and I have come tonight to talk to you about an issue that apparently has been overlooked by this council for this past year. I know that when the announcement of a local medical school was issued, many were excited and accepting of a new future for this area. However, if a positive plan is not done appropriately, then the true cluster of evil begins to rear its head. And so it is happening here. I have known for a long time that those who were placed in the political seats of this beloved city are not really concerned with the maintenance of black culture or the rise of the economically disadvantaged to a more livable status. But I never believed that those elected would be so arrogant as to say to a total neighborhood community, and I quote, "You have absolutely no business here. Get out." In the area known as Florence Midtown Apartments, we were promised some 30 years ago that if we allowed the destruction of the then neighborhood, we would receive a newer, safer, and more protected community. Now we are being told that what little cultural history we have left is again to be destroyed, and we are to be sent on our way. I'm sorry. This has me very emotional, as you can tell. The other day, someone told me that we are not the only neighborhood in the city to be torn down and rebuilt. Well, I say here tonight, my arrogant friend, we are not being rebuilt, just destroyed. This community is a loving complex with good neighbors and areas left to teach our children about their past. If you walk up Adams Avenue through the complex, you'll hear the voices of the Williamses, the Parkers, the Greens, the Wilsons, et cetera. Now there is to be nothing left, and we have no participation in any attempt to save at least part of it. We at Florence Midtown are not against a medical school, never have been. We are against the way it is being done, and we will fight to the end to make sure you do not destroy the very souls this school is to try and heal. I know that city council is not representative of the minority citizens, the economically disadvantaged, or union members. Proof? A union rally three weeks ago, and not one soul from this council came to support the nurses. But yet you want a medical school built? Not one of you have contacted myself or Mr. Stolaric concerning the problems facing our tenants if this complex is indeed sold. No one has approached the African-American community, the biracial community, or the Indian community to discuss the total destruction of this historical area that was left from the last attempt to rid the city of minorities and poor. I would keep this for future reference. Yes, our cultural history is different, our economic status is different, but we have one thing in common: we vote. And you may need our vote someday to maintain your seats. Perhaps it is time that a truly culturally diverse, economically literate, and unionized council takes seat and really represent this city. As I go to my seat, let me say, I keep hearing what a wonderful addition this medical college will be to this area. Pardon me if I ask a question this evening. In an area surrounded by high-rises that house the elderly and the disadvantaged, both sides of a shelter that houses homeless, why is this area so important? But pardon me if I answer this myself, they do need cadavers, don't they?
Thank you, Reverend Simmons. The next name, John.
Stolaric.
I'm sorry.
Hello?
I'm sorry, I couldn't read it.
Good evening, ladies, gentlemen, council members. My name is John Stolaric. I am a lifelong resident of Scranton, presently residing at the Midtown Florence Apartments Complex on Adams Avenue. I am also the current president of the Midtown Florence Tenant Council, but even more important than that, I am a veteran of the Vietnam and a disabled veteran of Desert Storm. Throughout our history, the returning veteran was told he would, he or she would have some choices with regards to where a veteran decides to reside. Other veterans along with our families live in Cal Midtown Apartments home. We all made the choice because of affordable housing and location. Now we are being told that a medical school is being built in our backyard. The school will even replace the building I reside in with classrooms and labs. The mayor has said, "This is good for Scranton." This is progress. My questions are this: how is putting any veteran and his family out of a dwelling and neighborhood good for Scranton? How is it that maybe another veteran, making another veteran homeless, can be called progress? While growing up as a young boy and then a young man, I listened to our city leaders and others say how much need there was for low-income housing. And today, there is still not enough low-income housing for our age and Korean War and Vietnam conflict vets. Some of our Desert Shield, Desert Storm veterans have reached their late 50s and our fast approaching 60s. No, I say again, no. Members, members of council, we do not need to be tearing down the midtowns of our town. They are needed. Thank you.
Andy Spreglia, Scranton Phil Scantonians. I know you're at Table 6A, but it brings up an important question, and a question, just like the question last week, with the social... And the question, just like the question last week with the social security numbers. How did this get on the agenda? How did it get there? Who called up? I was told that the president of Lackawanna College called. At least the article in the paper sort of said that. And not anything to do with the act of leading a medical school. And this is important, to find out who called up and got this piece of legislation on the agenda. That's where you have to investigate. Social security numbers, the FBI will take care of that. And the DA, too. But this is important. Who has that much political pull to call up and have something put on the agenda without even telling the people involved that they were going to do it? There's something wrong in this city, and if you don't see it, you're blind. You've got your head in the sand, you had it in the sand, you're destroying the city. There's 300 families there. When this first came up, I said the place to put this was over at the university. As this progressed, it's no longer anything real. It's a pre-med school, two years, and then they go somewhere else. That's it. It's a two-year school now, and then it goes out somewhere else. It could have been placed on the university, but then they went ahead and controlled the money and probably controlled the project. This is a money deal. It has nothing to do, it actually would have medical school. It's a money deal, spending government money, your and my money, everybody's money, with little or no advantage to the city. Really, a medical school should have been placed at the university, and a pre-med should have been there anyway. You have nothing to do with the school board. But if you went up there and looked at the playground, there's a million dollars' worth of development on that ground that they sold for a million dollars. Plus, it's the kids' park. Why care about the children of Scranton? We wanted them to pay to go swimming, we wanted them to do everything. All they have to do now is just be here. That's it. We're going to destroy their parks. This administration has a process of destroying all of the city parks other than Naog. We lost this outside complex, it's next to a housing area. Them little kids can play in the river. Why not? The worst they can do is drown, and who cares then, right? They're only little kids. But you sat, well, you didn't do it, but the council before you, I think two before you, sat there and did it. With no regard to the children of the city, and this playground that they're taking away from the children, you have no regard again for the kids, the people that live in that neighborhood. Probably because they're poor. Why should we care about the poor? They don't pay taxes. All they do is exist. This administration does not care about the poor of the city. They showed that when they stopped that project in town for drywall, not be in place where it should have been placed, and nobody knows if that was legal or not legal. But the main thing is, they wanted them people out there. There's somebody that wants to acquire all that land that has tremendous political power in this city, and they're using their influence to drive out the poor. Who it may be, I don't know. But whoever it is, you've got to find out who put this piece of legislation before you. It made you look like fools. It actually did. They put something like that before you, and then they pulled the rug out of you. Let's go with the 7G before I get carried too much about it, because this is important, too. You've got to follow the money chair. If this is going to the SSRA for one point a million, maybe. You've got to follow, if you approve this, there's two things you've got to do. You've got to see how much the SRA actually paid the city, how much we got, and when they sold the contracts to NCC entities that are there, how much they received from that entity. Because this could be a shell game, and this administration is very good on shell games, moving money one place, to another place, to another place, selling the DPW sites continually, just so they can build up a reserve fund to pay off these bonds. Well, eventually, it's going to collapse, and you have a point in it. I just hope they pass a law down to Harrisburg that holds, that hold all public officials responsible for their actions. Then half these things would never come before us, because you know you would be liable for them. Thank you.
Ozzy Quinn?
Ozzy Quinn, president of the Scranton Lackawanna County Taxpayers Association. Good evening. Tonight, you went through B, application decisions rendered by the zoning hearing board held on April 9, 2008, without even a wink. If you were at that zoning board, you would know that they did something that is going to cause a lot of havoc in the city of Scranton. They approved 3 to 2. Mrs. Cook voted against it. She was one of them, 3 to 2, to allow a variance in a 1A, R1A zone. You just don't do it. You just don't put a business in an R1A zone unless it's an exceptional condition. Now, I called Harrisburg. Harrisburg told me, "That's insane." So this is what you're doing with ECTV. You're taking them and you're putting them in an R1A zone. I was around, and Judy, you was around, when the Hill Neighborhood Association, and what was going on up in the Hill, and what the zoning, what the planning, zoning was, that from Vine Street up would be 1A, so people could not use commercial enterprises, people could not take single homes and make them into multifamily. That way, they could stop that residential blight from, keep on increasing in the Hill neighborhood. Now, ECTV asked for an unnecessary, they said that they want a variation, and a variance, and they said because of a hardship, okay? Well, it's an unnecessary hardship, you know? They put it upon themselves by asking to go up there. By doing that, they're not allowed a variance. Mr. Nevaraski and Mr. Mavarski spoke about, Mr. Mavarski's a member of the, so, a member of the Hill, and they spoke about how it's going to ruin the neighborhood, which I said, by allowing that variance. Once you set that precedent, an attorney of the order will tell you in law, you have said something that's going to keep on going and going again, and you're going to go back to the old zoning. You're going to have spot zoning all over the city. Now, I believe that this ECTV, along with Mayor Doherty, okay, is a conspiracy, along with city council members, some city council members, three of you, the zoning board, and Mr. Mansour, to get Scranton today the hell out of here. There's no doubt in my mind. They have approved with a RFP, which you never saw before in the history of the city of Scranton, presented by the mayor, that gives them, in their proposal, the mayor approved $1 million, as a previous speaker said. That $1 million has to come from Comcast money, 25% they're asking of Comcast monies each year. Now, I want to say, explain something. That money has to be transferred, then, by the city council. Am I correct? It has to be transferred from Comcast over to ECTV. Please do not do it, okay? We've got something up there that is, we're paying, not a red cent by the taxpayers, and you want to put $1 million on a city that is so far in debt, over a quarter of a million dollars in long-term debt, you want to put, give them $1 million? What a conspiracy, what a way to get rid of Scranton today. You ought to be ashamed of yourself, and the way that you are presenting this here to the people of the city, and you expect to ram it down their throats. It's a shame, it's unbelievable that you can do that, and I'm sorry that Mr. Mansour is part of this. He is running a nonprofit, and he wants to get them in that building so they will heat, and they will keep it winterized all winter, and he won't happen to have to pay for that. Okay? They want high-tech, high-digital equipment without any bid. Okay? Will Comcast carry that? Type of electronic equipment, high-digital, and what's that, HD, okay? And they won't allow that, and why should they go out and just do this without any bids? What do we forget? We forgot about bids in the city of Scranton? It's a shame, and the city council, you've got to put a stop to this, as the previous speaker said. You've got to put a stop to it. You three people got to stand, not you, Bill, you three people got to stand up and say, "It's the end of it. Mayor Doherty, you're killing Scranton. You don't have to be a financial wizard to know that. You're doing things to get rid of Scranton today for his election." They, he does not like what's going on through that 61 camera. It's obvious. I have, sorry. And the other thing is, this here, 7F, you do not need a solicitor and a human relations commission. I do not know that attorney. I'm sure he's a great attorney, but $95 an hour just for not, for not any cases, I don't know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident. I'm so glad Mr. DeBilly Elcainton, because he enlightened me about something I was unaware of. Chris Doherty wants to give this new company $1 million over five years, while our firefighters and policemen and women haven't had a raise for six years, and he has $1 million to throw to this TV station, and Ozzy Quinn is right, it's just a conspiracy, because he doesn't want us talking here while he's running for reelection next year. This is nothing but a conspiracy. But again, we have $1 million to throw to a TV station, but not a penny for firefighters or policemen. Let's wake up council and do what's right for a change, all right? And not listen to what Chris Doherty tells you to do? I'm not talking to Mr. Court Rider, Mrs. Evans, either. Okay, last week, Mrs. Ferrucci, I asked you if you went to the fundraiser, if you were paid for it, and you said, "Do I go to a bar, pay for my drinks? What does one thing have to do to another? I'm not an elected official." If you get invited to a fundraiser, you're expected to pay. On that subject, again, you are all Democrats up there. It was a Democratic fundraiser, why were only three people invited? That reeks of impropriety, and I think it might even be an ethics violation, because you people received gifts not going, you people, that's like a gift, going to a fundraiser and not paying. And if I can get the phone number for the Ethics Board, I will be giving them a phone call.
I'll be happy to give it to you after the meeting, Mr. Spindler.
I won't be staying that long. Next thing. Last week, I was driving by the Robson house, and I saw about 30 people fixing it up. Later on, I learned it was off-duty firemen doing what Captain Robson started, they were finishing remodeling his house. I think that was a very honorable thing they did, and I just commend the firefighters on their work, and it shows the camaraderie they have in their union, and they deserve a raise. Next thing. Last Saturday, a citizen came up to me and said he rides his bike up on the upper Lackawanna Avenue Bridge, the one past U-Haul, and he said he can't ride it, the sidewalks are caved right in. Mr. Court Rider, I don't know if you go up that way, and I went by, it's disastrous. The sidewalks are broken in half, they are caved in. I don't know if that's PennDOT or if that's the city, but something has to be done with those sidewalks. It's a real safety hazard. The next thing, Mrs. Evans, thank you for having that hole fixed on Franklin Avenue, but they didn't do it correctly. Already, you can see a little depression there, how it's sinking in already. All they did was filling it, fill it in. There's a void underneath there. Until that void is filled in, that's going to keep sinking. And I said that here, I said, "There's a void underground, you can see right in it." So if we could maybe have them look into that again? Thank you. Mr. McGough, last week, you gave Mrs. Evans a hard time about speaking, but you let Mrs. Ferrucci interrupt Mr. Williams and didn't say a word to her. So you have to stop discriminating, Mr. McGough, and treat everybody up there equally. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Brett McClellan?
My name is Brett McClellan, Scranton taxpayer, homeowner. Next Tuesday, Pennsylvania primaries will be held, and I encourage everyone who is registered to vote to realize the importance of doing so. We must all go out to vote. It's important to believe that your vote counts. It's important also to believe that America starts here, because as the saying goes, all politics is local. This fact has been demonstrated this weekend by Mr. Doherty and others, who all of a sudden decided to champion the cause of the everyday, hard-working, overtaxed, and underpaid citizens of Scranton. I applaud them all for their hypocrisy. Your gesture will be duly noted with every piece of oppressive legislation you will pass this year. Despite Mr. Doherty's objection to Mr. Obama's perceived insensitive statements about small-town America, elitism is alive and well in Scranton, Pennsylvania. It always has been, and Mr. Doherty's vision of Scranton's future depends on bringing in elites to fill up these condos in downtown Scranton. Better, not bitter, is just a fanciful slogan. We need to be bitter about nepotism. We need to be bitter about cronyism, classism, economic racism. Elitists are here in Scranton. Elitists are a part of our local government. To all of a sudden believe that somehow our mayor is not an elitist is insane. The same insanity that allows us to vote for the same people over and over again and respect different results. I'm not going to say what Mr. Obama said was right, or the way he said it was acceptable, but what I will say is, Mr. Doherty was very hypocritical and wrong to champion the cause of the everyday man and woman of Scranton, Pennsylvania. Like bowling on gravel, I'm not expecting my message to get a strike. I'm not expecting the essence of my message will get through, because most people have seemed to have already made up their mind to demonize a bitter, a bitter truth. I guess all I really want to say is, just take a look around. All politics is local. Look for the truth within the insult, and above all, vote. Thank you.
How are you tonight? I'm here tonight on a problem that I received this afternoon while I was out on my recording on my telephone. I got a threatening call from someone in this place, that I am not allowed to come here anymore, and I should shut my big mouth, and they don't like me. Well, it's too darn bad. You don't like me, you don't have to like me. I don't ask you to. But I'll be damned if I'm not going to speak my freedom first. So you keep your mouth shut, Court Rider, you, Mr. McCourt.
I'm Mr. McGough.
You just shut up. It's my five minutes. If there's any man in this room
Mrs. Knight.
That has a backbone
You need to, you need to address council, not
And anybody in this room that is the man, or the thing, the lowest-crawling, creepiest thing that called me today, that didn't even leave his name, and said to me, "I better watch out. I have to be afraid." I'm not afraid of any man in this whole goddamn world. I know, damning is not allowed in here, but I'm tired of this, that you have, you have to be
Mrs. Knight, again, you have a right to address council.
I'll counsel you. You don't know what it is to counsel. That's your whole darn problem. You three think it's funny, and you, Sherri, you're the one that brought it up the other week. We're supposed to be a happy family here, but when somebody talks about you, you rip into them like you want to tear them apart. And you, too, Judy, you're the same way. You've both got the same attitude. But Mr. McGough, when they act up, you don't pound your hand down or point your finger. And I'll tell you, tell you one thing, whoever called me today, he better stand up, because I want him to face me Whoever called me today, he better stand up, because I want him to face me, face to face, and tell me exactly what he means. If he's got the bones, backbones to do it. If not, he is the most lowest piece of...
You've made your point.
I made my point? I don't think I made my point. Because if this man was big enough, he'd stand up. And my phone number is unlisted, so I'd like to know how the heck this man got my phone So if it didn't come from somebody in council that might have had some connections... Yeah, yeah, talk to him. Talk to him, Sherry. You write him notes back and forth. You're like two little kids over there. Ah, you're full of malachy. You don't even know how to run one council yet.
Thank you.
And I wish the hell when they could re-vote. They vote the whole three years out.
I think we should note that Les was the only clapper.
Candace McColigan.
Candace McColigan, Scranton resident. Elliot Brown of the New York Sun was happy to report that in 2007, New York City's bond rating increased to AA, the third-highest rating available and a record high for that city. This was a huge turnaround from the late 1970s, when the city had no bond rating at all and nearly went bankrupt. Sound familiar? It took prudent fiscal planning and outstanding management of finances to turn that city around and for it to recover from a time when the city was swimming in debt. The problems arose from administrations who relied on debt to finance operations, which only supported the downward spiral that city was facing. Again, sound familiar? In Scranton, this situation is all too close to home, except we are doing the exact opposite of what New York has been able to accomplish. Our bond rating is not increasing. It has continued to diminish under this mayor, being downgraded even further recently. How can we look to this mayor and feel that he was doing what is best for this city, when the world's foremost provider of independent credit ratings has shown no confidence in the financial management found here? If this mayor is doing such a great job, why isn't our bond rating increasing, as one would expect under excellent leadership? I suspect the bond rating is an accurate reflection of what is really happening. Too much spending, no priority placed on paying down debt, and decision-making based on political gain, rather than in the interest of the taxpayers, whose numbers, I might add, are dwindling. Yet another confusing sign for a city that is supposedly becoming more, not less, attractive. Unfortunately, it does not appear that the people of this city, whose eyes are open to the problems around them, have anyone on their side who can or will do what is right and put an end to too much borrowing and too much spending. When I last spoke about the problems I see in the actions of the mayor and how they violate the wording in the recovery plan, it appears the answer was that Pell says it's okay. Since when does anyone need Pell to define what is right and wrong, ethical or moral? I certainly don't. If each of you reads the recovery plan and looks openly at the raises given by this administration, it's obvious that this mayor doesn't even hold respect for a plan he had hand in writing. How much respect should we expect him to have for anything, if that's the case? If he's willing to blatantly violate his own language and do so with no remorse for his actions, is there anything that he will follow? Anything we could possibly believe we could trust him with? Or will he do whatever he wants, because he knows this council will not stand up and expose his wrongdoing? Just because DCD or Pell, who are being paid for their opinion, will not stand up, doesn't mean that the rest of you should turn a blind eye. No one should do what is right solely for a fear of punishment otherwise. And no one should do what is wrong solely because they know they will not be held accountable for those actions. You cannot expect legal standards to replace ethical ones. You cannot expect that if you say you're doing what is best for us, we will believe you when your actions so obviously show otherwise. You will never get respect if your actions are not respectable. If you can't think independently, then don't parade yourself as a public servant, because most of you are doing many things, but few of them seem to be motivated by serving public interests. We expect more of our government officials, because that is what they owe to us. That is what Mayor Chris Dougherty owes us, and that is what you owe us and nothing less. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Dave Dobson, resident of Scranton, taxpayer association associate. And a final comment. I don't see anything on here as to the proposals that were entered last week on Channel 61's behalf in Scranton today. But much has been said tonight, so I'll make that part brief. Much of the equipment that has been proposed, the purchase of this equipment, is overqualified and over-quality for the application. It's very expensive, and very few people will benefit for a number of years. And furthermore, it may be obsolete before most of the viewers can benefit. It's all high-definition equipment, and it's basically, he won't see a high-definition TV in most households for years. On 7C, this is very concerning. Certainly, taxes need to be paid and collected. In realizing that, please review and correct back collection practices, amend them, so that the penalties are more equitable for all. In the past, comments have been made that were overbuilt. I've heard it by officials. And this is a reckless... A reckless statement. This opinion is obsolete. High-population densities are more fuel-efficient, more suitable for mass transit, and eventually the suburbs will wither. 50-mile commutes are causing the greater energy consumption in greenhouse gases. Let's be ready for an influx. Down at the Scranton Library, there's a great deal of wonderful documentaries on some of these subjects. The Corporation, Extreme Oil, and Death to the Suburbs, to mention just a few. And if you ever obtain these DVDs or tapes and view them, you'll plainly see that the future is in this city, but we have to realize that as Scrantonians and start to invest and keep our closets clean, so that when the influx comes, we're ready for it and it can be a positive influence on the city. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. Charlie Newcomb.
Good evening to all council members. I just wanna touch on two topics. First topic I wanna talk about is, I was sitting at home last week, and I seen a discussion that was brought up to you about the single tax office. And the only thing I'd like to say about that, I am appalled as a taxpayer, the only person I feel that should... Anything should be done to right now, is if there was some wrongdoing with the checks that were brought in front of you. I'm sure that'll be taken care of at a later time with the FBI or something else. But I will tell you what. I wanna call... I wanna use the word mole. I wanna use the word, whatever you wanna use. Whoever faxed that paperwork over to Mr. Williams, I feel it violated the law, should definitely be fired and maybe put in prison. That's what I'd like to say about that and end that. And I think Mrs. Gattelli mentioned that a couple weeks ago, there is a lot of people that come to the podium here and claim to be taxpayers and homeowners, but if you do some investigation, you'll find out that they are neither. But we... I wanna clear up a little bit about this 25% tax increase that we've been hearing for year after year after month after month after month. In front of myself, I have my, and I repeat my own, tax bills. And I'm just gonna go back a little bit here from... I'm gonna start with 1999. We purchased our home. Our home was built in 1982. My first tax bill, it was $1,200 when I bought the home. I'm not gonna go through all the years, but I'm just gonna go in '07 and '08. But I just gave you '99, the first year, $1,200. In 2007, my total taxes were $2,044. And in 2008, for this year, my real estate bill is $2,139.98. My whole city tax is $247.55 for my land tax. My city improvement is $215.35, for a total of $462.90. That had one increase of my 25% increase when we issued it, and it caused my taxes to go up $74.40, which was my increase. My whole Lackawanna County tax, which we did have a 48% tax increase there a few years ago, and got... My whole county tax is $437.98. Last year's school tax was $1,164.16. This year's school tax for 2008 was $1,197.60. All these increases for all these years all come from the school district. My taxes averaged like $96 a year as I bought the house that went up. City of Scranton's taxes are very, very low when you look at... I mean, I didn't... Nobody appreciates a 25% tax increase, but I wish the taxpayers would realize out there, it's not the city of Scranton. Most of your money is paid to the school district. And just a little bit on that end, whoever negotiated that contract for our taxes for the school district, for the teachers paying $8,000 a year, I think we're gonna be in trouble next year or so, which nobody should ever pay $8,000. Whoever negotiated that contract was a very, very bad union official. But just take into consideration, in your taxes that I just gave you, these figures, next year, I believe they said in June of this year, unless there's something held, we should be getting our Lackawanna County reassessment bills at an average... So next year, maybe your Lackawanna County tax will go up. But I mean, I just wanted to clear up this 25% increase. I don't... People should be down there screaming at the school board meetings with more than... Like I said, my taxes were $1,200 in 1999. They are $2,100 in 2008, and only $74.106 of that were raised between the county and the school, all their... I'm sorry, the county and the city. All the rest of these taxes are paid to the Scranton School District. So I think the council's getting a lot of abuse for something that is very, very trivial, and people should really be looking at their school taxes, because that's what... If we don't get money from the gambling down the road, our taxes are gonna be a lot higher than what they are now. So everybody, please, look at that when everybody comes up here screaming and blaming the same three council people for the 25% tax increase. You should be...